All right. Hello. Test, test, test. Nope. Can y'all hear me?
Welcome.
Nope. Hello. Hello.
Sick.
Hello.
It's not good. My wife is a boxing boy.
Hello. There we go. It's not working, no, this one. All right, let's get started. The time is 6:04 PM. This meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum. And the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. We're going to start with a comment from Mr. Rice.
Thank you, President Tassan. Some of you may have noticed I looked a little different when I came in the room tonight. It's because I'm wearing a fireman's hat that Mrs. Tassan got today. She went through fireman training. And they put her through the paces. She had to suit up. She used the jaws of life to get somebody out of a car. And had to climb the stairs with oxygen backpack and an axe and firefighter equipment, 75 pounds of gear. And so when I got here tonight, she said, "Well, hey, Mr. Rice, you look a little down. Would you like to wear my fireman's hat?" And I said, "Would I." Then she told me she got to ride in the front seat of the fire truck and blow the whistle. And I was just, "Oh, that is so cool." So this is really her hat, but she let me wear it. And I'm going to take it off now because I can't hear anything.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Yes, it really was very cool. I was very honored to be with the Houston Fire Department today. And when I walked the halls, I saw a memorial to Ann Sullivan. So it was really neat to walk those halls with firefighters who were serving today and seeing all the ones who gave their lives in the line of duty. So we definitely thank them for their service, and I thank them for their time today. It was quite an experience. I tell you, I do not know how they do what they do. Because when I got on my knees to hold the hose with all the gear on me and I was done and they said, "Okay, you can get up now." And I said, "No, I can't get up now." So I wasn't strong enough to get up with all the stuff that was on me. So it's incredible what they have to endure every day. So thank you, Mr. Rice, for sharing that. And I'm glad you got to wear the helmet.
You too.
Okay, on to business now. We're going to start with our information items. And first up is our first report. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, we always enjoy sharing these reports. The Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas Annual Hearing we have to conduct. So I'm going to turn it over to our CFO, Steve Ambassador. He'll introduce his team members who are presenting.
Thank you, sir, Madam President, members of the board. This is our required first report. Ms. Edgar is going to be going through it with you. I would just happy to report that everything's on track. And this will be the 15th year that we've received the highest rating allowable. So without further ado, we'll let Deanna go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Dupree, Board of Trustees. As Steve mentioned, this evening, I'll be presenting the results of our 15th Annual School First Report. Since this is a public hearing, citizens will have an opportunity to comment at the conclusion. All righty. Let's roll. Okay, so for ease of delivery, I broke the presentation down into three sections. First, I'll provide a brief overview of what School First is. Then we'll take a look at Fort Bend's results. And then we'll review some disclosures that are required by the Texas Education Agency. So School First is essentially a report card of the district's financial condition. FIRST is an acronym that stands for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. It was developed by TEA in 1999 and then put into practice beginning in 2002. The report always lags a year behind. So the results I'm presenting to you this evening are based on fiscal year 2016. We're currently, as Steve mentioned, in our 15th year of School First reporting and have received the highest rating possible for all 15 consecutive years. So the 83rd legislature made changes to the first reporting. The changes were phased in over the past three years. The past two years, the rating worksheets have included 15 indicators. Previously, it was based on 20 indicators. These changes were finalized in August of 2016. The biggest adjustment includes ratings associated with future financial solvency of each district. The grading mechanics also changed from previous years, making it a little bit more difficult to obtain that A, superior rating, and a little bit more easier to obtain an F, which is substandard. The 15 performance indicators for rating year 2017 can be broken down into three categories that measure financial, critical financial components, financial solvency, and financial competency. The indicators are rated differently, where questions one through six are yes or no questions with no scoring attached. And then questions six through 15 are worth up to 10 points each for a maximum score of 100. Then the scoring rubric would determine the status assigned to the district. Again, that's a letter grade of A through F. Okay, so let's take a look at our results. According to School First regulations, we are required to present results on all 15 indicators. Tonight, I'll be highlighting a few of these areas in each of the three categories. So beginning with the critical indicators, questions one and two are asking about our annual external audit to ensure the annual financial report was submitted on time and asking if we received a clean audit with no instances of material weakness in our internal Indicator three relates to our debt payments, ensuring the district did not default. Number four confirms timely payments to other governmental agencies. And number five is looking at the statement of net position for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016. Question seven is a financial solvency indicator, and it measures current assets over current liabilities to determine if the district can cover its short-term debt. To score a perfect 10, the ratio had to be greater than or equal to 3%. Our ratio came in at 2.62%, so we did lose two points on that indicator. Those are the only two points we lost. It might be helpful to note that there's no parameter for scoring nine points. So if you're just even below the threshold, you lose the two points. Indicator eight is calculating a long-term liabilities to total assets ratio with 60% or less, scoring a perfect 10. And Fort Bend's calculation came in at 55.7%. Question 11, still under solvency, is checking on the district's administrative cost ratios. Our ratio was well below the recommended threshold of 8.55%. We came in at 6.86%. And the last three questions are related to competency measures, with indicator 13 questioning the accuracy of our PIMS data submission compared to what we reported in our annual financial report. The allowable variance is less than 3%, and we came in at a 0% variance. Question 14 refers back to the CAFR, looking for instances of material noncompliance with laws related to local, state, and federal funds. And finally, indicator 15 is looking at a district's true-up situation in an instance of an overallocation of foundation school program funding. So in a situation where a district is overallocated with state aid, if they're not monitoring what they're earning that year, they could spend that overallocation and then not have that money to pay back to the state. And then based on these 15 indicators, Fort Bend again scored 98 points out of 100 for a superior rating or a letter grade of an A. And this last section brings us to the required disclosures from TEA. The district needs to disclose any gifts received over $250 and any business transactions a board member or superintendent may have engaged in with the district. As you can see, there have been no gifts and no transactions. Additionally, we must provide information related to the superintendent's income. The superintendent's contract is available on the district website under the superintendent's profile. And the superintendent did not receive any additional income in fiscal year 15, 16, other than from Fort Bend ISD. And finally, we're required to show reimbursements by board member and superintendent. And these are made to be broken down in this prescribed format this evening by meals, lodging, transportation, fuel, and other. Almost all of these reimbursements are related to registration fees and conferences with district business-related events. And with that, this concludes the School First presentation with a 15th consecutive superior rating. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Edgar. We appreciate that presentation. Do we have questions or comments from the board members? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. Ms. Edgar, this report comes from the TEA, and it is just focused on our financial position. It's not focused on student achievement.
Correct.
Now, that's another rating that the controller puts forth, as I recall, Glenn Hagar. And I don't recall what the acronym is.
It was actually the FAST report.
FAST report.
And Hagar doesn't have that. Susan Combs developed that, and she actually took that now as an independent. And she's still running that report.
Susan Combs is?
Yes.
Do you know when that report comes out?
That report just came out several months ago, and it was in the spring. And we received five stars on that report as well.
Five out of five?
Yes, sir.
And a superior rating?
Yes, sir.
And the ranking for superior increased, as you said it did in your opening remarks. In order to get it this year, we had to score between 90 and 100. And last year, it was 70 and a half.
Correct.
So even though the bar was raised, we still got a superior rating. And this was the 15th year in a row
Correct.
of a superior rating.
We actually scored higher than last year. Last year, we lost four points, so.
That's really good.
Thank you.
That's really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have other questions or comments from the board members? Do we have comments or questions from audience members regarding the first report? Okay. Thank you, guys, very much. Next up will be our Gifted and Talented Services update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. As the board knows, we have been working for quite a while now to put together some tasks for some committees to improve Gifted and Talented Services. So Deanna and her team are going to present an update on that work this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree. Good evening, Madam President and Board of Trustees. This evening, we will be providing you an update about the work of the GT Task Force. As you know, the task force was generated in July of this school year, in the summer, for the purposes of assessing where we are with our GT programming, what are our successes, where are the gaps, and to offer recommendations about how to move forward for continuous improvement in that area. So at this time, I will hand it over to Mr. Troy Byrne, so he can share the specific work of the task force thus far.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayurvedra. Good evening, Board President, Board members, and Dr. Dupree. Thank you for allowing us to share the update on the GT program this evening. We'll share where we're at with our GT programming and the work of our GT Task Force on our Parent Advisory Committee. We broke down the presentation into the five components of our GT services that we provide in Fort Bend right currently. We have family, community involvement, student assessment, service design, curriculum and instruction, and professional development. This is what we'll present, is what we're doing currently, and then how the task force is addressing each one of these components in our service. Currently, we're serving 5,684 students through GT services. That's K through 12. Last year, GT was housed in Advanced Academics. And with our reorganization, it's now housed in Enriched Learning Opportunities. So last year, our board members presented their listening tours. And during the listening tours, our parents came forth with several concerns about GT services in Fort Bend. We listened to their concerns, and we put together a survey to survey all of our parents back in April of 2017. And with that survey, we also tied on, would you like to be part of an advisory committee or a task force? Out of the 5,683 surveys we sent out, we had 195 responses. And out of those 195 responses, we had 118 parents who were interested in being on an advisory or on a task force. So what we did is we took those 118 interested parties, and we identified parents that were closely with us in GT, or they had some background in GT. They might be a professor at a university. They might have provided services in another district. Those were the people that we identified to work with us on the task force so that they would be able to contribute research and information and best practices on what we're doing currently with our GT services and what we can improve on. Then what we had left in the list, we randomly selected parents from campuses. So if we had 10 parents who applied from a certain campus, we randomly selected one of them to be on our advisory, and then we had a backup parent for that campus. Currently, we do not have a representative from every campus in our district. The work of the task force is to look at our current programming, evaluate our programming, and then come back to us with research questions that they want to work on this year. I'll be sharing those research questions with you tonight. But what we're asking them to do is provide guidance on how we might modify, change, enhance our current practices in order to better serve our students. The Parent Advisory Committee, they're our current feedback loop with our campuses. So what's going right with our campuses right now? What can we improve on? What questions do you have? And then we also provide guidance as what we're doing with the task force. So to guide our work, we want to give them some research background on what is considered best practices. The state of Texas has the State Plan Rubric that we are using to guide our task force. And within the rubric, there's a compliance column, there's a recommended column, and then there's an exemplary column. We're finding that we're in different parts of each column depending on what part of the service we're looking at. What we've asked the task force to do is take us to exemplary and beyond. So this is the state plan for GT services. We want to, for sure, hit exemplary. And then we're seeing other practices from other states across the nation that we can use to enhance current programming. So we'll look at the first component that we're addressing. And the first component is family, community involvement. Currently, we have parent nights, and that includes Should I Refer Night? So at the beginning of the year, we inform our parents about what is the referral process and what does that mean. Of course, we have the parent survey. We're doing another parent survey that we've modified and improved that will be rolling out January 8th. The GT Task Force, we've already created. We're actually meeting this Thursday. Mr. George is on our GT Task Force. And then the Parent Advisory Committee meets once a month. And then PACE is a local group that parents came together, Parents for Academic Excellence. And so they reach out to us, and they inform us of their meetings. We try to make those meetings as much as possible. But there are also, several members are on our GT Task Force. So you can see what their focus question is for this year. They use the rubric that I just showed you to guide them to this question. How can we educate all adult stakeholders about the true definition of gifted and talented students? There's been quite a bit of conversation, misinformation about what GT students are or are not. So they are looking at, how can we create an awareness campaign? And that would actually be infused within our PD, too, for when we say all adult stakeholders, it's not just the parents, but our teachers, administrators. Second component is student assessment. So currently, we have a nominations and referral window that happens at the beginning of the year. The referral and nominations is online. We've created an online service. Then we do testing in October, November, where we identify the students through a campus selection committee. We notify our parents. There is an appeals process that happens in the beginning of February. Students can furlough if they choose to. And in this case, they may opt out of GT services for up to one year. And then we do have policy that talks about transfers. So students who transfer from other districts, we take that information, and then our GT coordinators evaluate how those students were identified to see if we need to take them through our GT testing in Fort Bend ISD. We currently use the COGAT, Cognitive Ability Test. And so students are being assessed on verbal, quantitative, and nonverbal reasoning. But what we found is an under-identification of students in large portions of our district. We created the VISTAS program. I believe it was six years ago that it was initiated. The first two years was ironing out the system and getting it rolling. So last year, we had an evaluation in April. And the evaluation showed that, yes, using VISTAS helped us get students who were not identified to be identified, who were going through the VISTAS program. However, there was misconceptions among our teachers, first grade through third grade, their belief system about economically disadvantaged versus not economically disadvantaged. So that is now part of our training process. The other thing that we've done with VISTAS is it's extended to fourth and fifth grade now. So it's a great program. And what we do in there is it's like a pre-enrichment. So they're not identified as GT, but we give them pre-enrichment activities so that when we do test them on the COGAT, they test higher in those abilities. And in the Hanover Report, it showed statistically that they actually increased in all three Let's move on. Oh, let me tell you the research question. So even without going through the VISTAS with our committee, the Subcommittee for Student Assessment, they said, "You know what? We need to figure out ways to identify our GT students beyond the COGAT." And they linked on to the profile of a graduate, which was one of those huge, ah, moments, you know? So how can we use the seven critical attributes in the profile of a graduate to identify gifted and talented students? And what's beautiful about that is with the COGAT, we're looking at math and science and verbal. But with true GT-ness, it can also be leadership and creativity and artistic ability. And that is not really measured through the COGAT. So it was beautiful for them to come up with that focus question. For service design, we have several services that we provide, elementary through high school. So cluster grouping, that's where we take GT students and make sure that they're working with equal ability peers. We, of course, offer pre-AP and AP classes throughout the district. We have credit by exam, where if they get an 80% or higher, they can credit out. Curriculum compacting, we accelerate the learning that they have to do with the TEES to provide extra time for enhancement activities. Accelerated courses, those are students taking our Spanish and our math classes in middle school. Of course, we have our GT Academy, which is, you know, doing some amazing work over there at Quail Valley. And then enrichment opportunities, that's our Destination Imagination, Academic Decathlon, UIL, Spelling Bee, robotics. We have, we've included more enriched opportunities this year than previous years, extending the robotics. Moving on to, well, let me go over the question first. So in this one, as we talk about service design, in the Subcommittee, what they've come up with is that we need to enhance cluster grouping, curricular compacting, and flexible grouping slash pacing. So the question they came up with was, what personnel and funding is needed to support flexible pacing and flexible grouping in classrooms? The conversation around this has been, what if we had a GT co-teacher on a campus, and that GT co-teacher went in and co-taught with the teacher and did the enrichment activities with the GT students while they're getting the core curriculum as well? As they bring that up, I direct them towards funding and say, you know, that might be an extra person in the room, or do we identify a person who already exists on campus, and we train that person to do exactly what you say? So they're researching how we can pull that off. But what they're understanding is that we're doing a lot of what they're asking. It's just we need to be purposeful in how we do that, and we need to be consistent on how we do that. So the messaging and the professional development needs to be consistent. And that's crossing over into the PD component. With curriculum and instruction, of course, anytime we talk about gifted and talented, we're talking about differentiation. We differentiate through these five pieces. We can look at learners' needs, and that's the flexible pacing and flexible levels. Depth and complexity, we can look at student readiness, learning profiles, and student interests. And at the elementary level, we differentiate with the Texas Performance Standard Project. So one thing to be mindful is with differentiation, it's not just the instruction, it's the assessment. And so we need to assess our GT students through the same modalities to see if they're evaluating, they're creating new thought, they're analyzing those higher-order thinking skills so they actually create a process. And then the question that they're looking at is, what curriculum policy and procedures needed to ensure flexible pacing and level-appropriate instruction for abilities and skills to be employed at elementary, middle, and high? It's leaning towards procedural. So we've looked at policy. Our policy is sound. It's the procedures that we have in place as far as what teachers could or couldn't do in the classroom. And then finally, our last component, our fifth component, professional development. So if a teacher is to serve a GT student, they should have 30 hours of professional development initially prior to providing instruction. And so we do provide that online, and we provide multiple, multiple sessions during the summer. And then throughout the year, we still continue to provide sessions. The five sessions that you see up here also link to the five components that I just showed you. So once I get my 30 hours, I need to get a six-hour update every year to serve our GT students. The question that they came up with, it's the same Subcommittee. So the Subcommittee chose to integrate the two. How do we educate all adult stakeholders about the true definition of gifted and talented students? Going back to PD, we sent, we have 30 members on our task force. We sent nine to Taggart a couple weeks back. So we want to make sure that they're going out to the best PD that can be provided. Taggart was here in Houston two weeks ago. And we are debriefing all of those sessions this Thursday with the task force members. So next steps. So they've come up with these questions. They're researching. And being the teacher that I am, I've required them to provide something for me by January. That would give us a timeline where, as a district, we can evaluate their recommendations for financial implications. Is there a policy implication? What procedures do we need to put in place? How do we put all that together? That'll go through instructional council and E-Team to evaluate. Anything huge would have to go through DMO. And then Phase One, whatever we do approve, will actually go into effect in June. By June, we would have to have everything in place to roll in July. But one thing I've told the committee is that it's, this is not over. So this is a continuous process that will be continuing for the rest of this year and years to come to improve the GT program, just like the other task force that we have in place at this time. So thank you again for allowing us to present the current state of our GT services in Fort Bend. I will take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Thanks for that presentation and for the report for us to read beforehand. We appreciate it. Do we have questions or comments from the board members? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes. Thank you, Troy. First, I'm extremely happy to see, because I was thinking about this question, how do we get people to understand what the true meaning is? And then, and I really hadn't looked at this beforehand. And so I was really extremely happy to see that that is going to be addressed because I think that, you know, the true gifted kids, what is it, like maybe 1%, 2%, 3% of the population? I mean...
We're tracking 7%. As a district, we're at 7.3%.
But I mean, in the, that's what we're tracking.
Right.
So, but in general, in a population, what is like the latest research that says, what is the percent of really truly gifted kids?
It's between 5% and 10%, depending on who you read.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, you know, there's so many people think, oh, my kid's, you know, my kid's GT. So, you know, there's so many people think, oh, my kid's, you know, my kid's GT. But it's just, it really is a very small amount, the truly gifted kids. And they just, they think differently and their minds is working differently. And we do need to address that because those kids are out there. And I'm really glad to see that we're actually going to look at different methods of testing using, you know, arts because that, I mean, that shows up there too. I mean, so that's, you know, I'm happy to see this. It looks like, you know, you guys are on the right track. I do kind of like the idea of having maybe a co-teach, but then, you know, we're already how many millions in the hole for this year? So thank you for addressing that as well.
Yes, sir.
But yeah, that would be, would be very helpful because it's not an easy thing to do, to address that small population in your classroom. Okay?
Yes, sir.
So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Heliger.
Thank you for your presentation. So as I was looking at the actual packet, I was curious around the parents who wanted to participate in our task force. And I noticed, I kind of just went through and just did, you know, high level of, okay, where are the applicants coming from and then holly, you know, some of our more higher performance schools. And so I'm interested to know, does this, how does this reflect to the actual gifted and talented students that we have at some of those schools? Because I would venture to say it probably reflects almost, I won't say one-on-one, but pretty close, you know, with the number, the percentage, percentages. I'll do it that way. And so my thought process would be, you know, if we weren't even able to get parents to apply for, to get on the task force, does that mean that we don't have parents at these schools that are, have children are gifted and talented? Because then I looked at all the names of the schools, of the people that were actually on the task force or applied or whatnot. And there is not a good representation from some of our other schools. And I want to understand that.
So let me, let me answer one part and then I'll give you. So when we think about, there's two, there's two groups that we're talking about here. One is the GT task force and that's a much smaller group. And so what we were, what we tried to accomplish with the GT task force in terms of representation was somewhat of a cross-section of representatives in terms of school personnel, community members, parents, central office members, and we even have students on our task force. In terms of the Parent Advisory Committee, we did want representation from every school. And we're, we haven't given up on securing representation from every school, but we do have some spots on that Parent Advisory Committee where we don't have a parent representative. So...
So can you, by providing me, to go with this list, the actual data of how many students we have identified thus far at those schools? So I can just kind of do a mental comparison in my own analysis? And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to give you that, give you that question earlier. But I definitely think there's, we've got gifted and talented kids. I would think even if it's 1% to 2% today's, you know, percentages at all of our schools. And so I want to be able to figure out, A, if they're not identified, how, you know, of course, how are we getting identified? I know that's your, you're on the path to do that, as well as identifying parents to assist us with that because that's a diverse group of people that we're, we are having these conversations with and I want people to be totally represented there. And it's a different, diverse thought process as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mr. George?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, make a couple of comments, you know, like it's an honor to be part of that and I missed the last one because I wasn't here. And I see, this has been discussed a long, long time. And I'm see, I'm so excited to see that, you know, these things are happening now. And I interacted with most of the task force members and, you know, they all have something to offer, you know, as you mentioned, because I always believed Fort Bend ISD is blessed with parents who are highly educated and stuff like that. So utilizing their knowledge and ability in this kind of area is just common sense. Serving on that committee and I really realize we are going in the right direction and it's an honor to see that all this stuff is taken care of. But we all recognize we have a long way to go. And so at least we are talking. That's, that's a good sign. So, so look forward to be part of that, even continue to work with parents and even the parent committees or whatever that is, you know? My service is always available and I appreciate all the effort you're making. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. George. Couple of questions I have, or I guess comments and questions. One is I want to make sure that we're remembering to consider our twice-special kids, those who are GT and receiving special education services. And we have those in our district. And so as we're considering these things from a GT perspective, I'd like for us to keep in mind to partner, coordinate with special education and make sure that we're also serving those kids. I'm sorry, Mrs. James, I didn't see your green light.
That's okay. I didn't turn it on until you started talking, showing this to my dad. Go ahead. You'll say a lot of things.
Maybe some of the same things. So I just want to be sure of that because they are going to have IEPs as well and it would be a good thing to incorporate into those IEPs to make sure those, the gifted part of their, their skills are taken care of. And then my next point or question is, you know, we do provide IEPs for our kids in special education. So one of the questions I did have, and I was glad to see the task force had it, is about policy or procedures that are going to ensure that the, not just differentiation takes place, but that accommodations and potentially modifications take place for these kids because they, like to Mr. Rosenthal's point, they really do. So I have one. I have, I have a child who is gifted and I have a child who has, who has special needs. So I see it and I see similar, you know, traits. I see similar qualities. And my gifted student is, learns differently. And so she's gifted in math because she learns differently in math, not because she makes, she doesn't make all As in math. In fact, she struggles because the way we teach is not the way she learns. In addition to the fact that she can't take the quizzes in the amount of time that she's given. And while our, the teachers think, oh, well, the typical kid should be able to do this, well, she's not. She's identified gifted for a reason. And so we're kind of working through those struggles because gifted doesn't always, it doesn't mean smart. It just means she learns differently, she thinks differently, she processes differently. So I want to make sure that when we're thinking about, I know you said you think our policy is, is sound and that's good, but I want to look at it through that lens and make sure that we don't need to change that to ensure that we do have some form of individualized plan for these kids to make sure that they're appropriately accommodated without parents having to jump through a lot of hoops or fight for it or convince a teacher that they need it because that's kind of where we are now in the gifted world. So...
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for that. And then last, I'll say that you don't have any representation from Baines and that's where my gifted child is. So I don't want to, I don't want to do that because I don't have time for it, but I'll see if I can help you guys recruit somebody and maybe, maybe I can have Shannon sit on the special ed advisory committee and the GT advisory committee. He would love that.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
He got, he got picked in the lottery, which was really, yes, it was really fun. So anyway, but thank you guys for all your work on this and I'm going to throw it to Mrs. James because I know she has additional questions.
Okay. Well, thank you. And you did touch on something. So I want to pick up on something you said, Addie, because I looked at this list too of where we have kids and I know that we're struggling identifying at some campuses and that's why we brought the VISTAS program on. And I think to be identifying systematically in the district is something I think that this board would like to see so that all kids that need services would be getting services. And I think a lot of that is awareness, but it has to do with awareness at the staff level too. Because kids that are speaking a different language or, you know, just have behavioral issues or whatever the other things might be, might be barriers. So thanks for working on that. I think, I think that that's, that's a step in the right direction. I did, you did mention the policy, Mrs. Hossan, and I know at one time we looked at this policy and it was pretty good, but we were struggling with the philosophy part of it. I think we've got our philosophy writing down now that we've got the profile of graduate in place and you guys are bringing that into your identification process or thinking about how to do that. And that's great because that really starts to align all the work we're doing. So I think we'd be willing to fix that policy or that philosophy if you feel like that's something that would help the committee. I was also really glad you brought up the GT co-teach model because like these ladies have said, kids that are gifted learn differently. One of the questions that I wrote, sent in was how are we adjusting our teaching style or how we approach, how these kids approach learning? Because they do approach it in a different way. And among gifted learners, they approach it in a whole myriad of ways, very similar to the special education model. And sometimes the gifted learners have trouble with socialization issues. So while we have a gifted and talented academy for the middle school that creates its own situation because those kids aren't socializing maybe necessarily out of their gifted and talented group. So I really like the concept of the co-teach inclusion kind of model because I can see that the gifted students can learn the socialization things and, and the general ed kids can learn to think maybe in a different way from the gifted kids. That's a lot of effort and of course it requires all of our teachers to be, to be trained in gifted and talented, but we've talked about that before as probably an exemplar anyway because of the creativity and, and all that it might bring to classrooms. So I'd like to know more. I'd like to think more about that co-teach inclusion kind of model. We've done clustering and grouping for a long time, but it just seems to be more work faster, not necessarily the curriculum in a different way. And I think that's what these kids really need. One of the comments in the packet, and I won't find it now, but one of the parents wrote something that I thought was really good. It was about how their child or the student approaches the work in a different way and how they don't, instead of approaching it maybe in a logical way, they, as a teacher would present it, they're approaching it in, you know, from every direction or, or going out from it in every direction. And figuring out how to harness that creativity or to have the rest of the class benefit from it, I think would be, I think would be good. So those are my comments. I appreciate the update. I appreciate the work and thanks for getting the conversation going and thanks for your, your nice report.
All right. Thank you, guys. We are now going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and those sections listed in the agenda, and for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.